My thing isn't going green.
Oh, you know why? I didn't turn this on. Usually that's necessary. No, you're good.
There we go. There we go. Okay. Call a meeting to order. This is a meeting on the Hampton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health, December 7, 2020, 6:00 PM, being conducted remotely pursuant to Governor Baker's order of March 2020 due to the COVID pandemic. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And just a, just a brief note, today is Pearl Harbor Day. I'd like to thank all those veterans who served in all the wars over the years for their service to this country to protect us. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing. The public hearing pursuant to Chapter 180 Master of Law, Chapter 184, Section 32, amendment to a conservation restriction as being in the public interest of the town. Basically, this is a transfer of a couple of acres of property between two adjacent landowners, one of them into, in the, they're removing the, amending the one parcel to remove the conservation restriction so they can move it to the other parcel of land. It's been signed both by the, both parties involved in the town because it's a conservation restriction has to approve it. Your work can be filed in the appropriate, uh, registry deeds.
Chair, make a motion to approve.
Is there, is there anyone on the, on the Zoom in opposition? Is there anyone, a proponent? Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the conservation restriction for the additional two acres to join to the current land with the conservation restriction.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll sign that. The next item on our agenda is February, minutes of the February 18th, 2020. Catching up?
I'm gonna review the minutes. I don't see any descriptive. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as of February 18th, as submitted for the year 20120.
We're approving them in advance. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our next item on our agenda is a meeting with the advisory committee to begin our planning for the fiscal year 22 budget. Right number? And I see Paul is here. Carol, I saw Doug on there. All right. So we're, we're, we're hoping that we could just begin the process by talking to the advisory committee and setting up some parameters that you're looking at and maybe talk about some things that we see coming out in the future that need to be included in the budget. So I've opened it up to any thoughts that you might have, or John?
Basically, just wanted to get, make sure we're on the same page for our general meeting next week with all departments, which we're open to have, still have at Hawn Burgess. Make sure that your preparation for speaking with your boards and committees dovetails with our board. You know, typically in the past, we've asked them to submit three different types. Don, we did discuss level funding, level service, and then perhaps a straight two and a half increase. And of course, we always appreciate any board to come back with an opportunity for savings as well. You know, that's important to the town. We're all looking for that type of thing. And then I assume that we'll go around the table and allow different boards and committees to express needs that they see in their budget going forward.
Carol? Or Doug? Or anyone from the advisory committee?
I mean, typically the, um, you know, we've, we've approached the budget in the last several years looking primarily for a level service budget from the departments, assuming that, you know, what we're providing is what we still want to provide. Level funding would imply that there would be some cuts involved in, in that if we, you know, anticipate increased expenses, say just, just in insurance alone. You know, so I mean, my, my preference and what we've done in the past, it's, I think, served as well as approached it with a level service and that if there are any kind of unusual circumstances within a department, that they could then, you know, advocate for that or present that, that perspective as well alongside a level service budget. Doug, do you have any other thoughts?
No, I, I agree with that. I mean, ever since the, you know, the shutdown of the departments, you know, 10 or 12 years ago, you know, we, we've essentially, I've been looking at the level service, keeping in mind that things change and we do expect there to be increases and decreases in different departments. And we ask each department head, when they come in to meet with us, to highlight any, any deviations from the previous year's budget. Not to give people a hard time, but simply to make sure that whatever requested increases are justified and, and warranted. I don't see, and I don't see any reason to vary from, from that approach. I mean, even though with the pandemic obviously makes things more difficult, I don't know that it changes the philosophy at all.
No, I, I think one thing that might be in, in, interesting to look at that we haven't really kind of dug into, um, you know, that much in past years is to really look at what the past spending has been in different accounts to see if, um, you know, folks are just simply rolling over, you know, the budget line from year to year and really looking at what's been spent over the last several years to see if there is any opportunity for some reduction. And then on the other side, if, if folks have needed more in, in lines, they, you know, they typically do come forward and ask us for that, but to make sure that we're, you know, we're looking at the history and, and looking at that information. I think that would be helpful. You know, Cliff has that information and, you know, I'm sure the department's heads are all getting that from him on a monthly basis.
I think we've done that. If you remember last year, we did some consolidation in some of our accounts here, both Town Hall Utilities, it's our, looked over expenditures in the prior year and came to a more, as you said, realistic outlay. That is, we appropriated 40,000, only spent 15,000 on the following year. This current year, we may be appropriate only 25 rather than return so much overage, rather than overappropriating. But I think the purpose of this board, so we go into next week, giving a, a common message from your board and our board that this is the type of budget we'd like our committees and boards and departments to submit. If you're saying your recommendation is level service, then I guess that's, that's appropriate. Again, if they have a need for something else, they need to make that need when they meet with us or meet with you, as they've done in the past. I think we should be consistent with one message to all the boards.
I would agree that we want a consistent message and I would also agree that level services is a good goal to try to aspire to. I would also wonder if we can do, um, ask each department to tell us what a level fund, what cuts a level funded budget would mean to them, just so we have a feel for what that would mean. Not that I would be a proponent of that, but it would give us a sense for if some catastrophe hit us and we couldn't do level service, then we would, we would know what direction we were going in. If that wasn't a lot more work for them to do, which it would seem to me it wouldn't be, they could say, well, if we were going to level fund, it would mean that I would have to cut, you know, whatever. And that would let us know, give us a clearer picture of exactly where their department stands. But I'd be interested in what the advisory committee thinks about that proposal and whether that's just too confusing or too difficult for them to do.
Don? Today I spoke with the director of the project that the Collins Institute is doing for the town to study job classification and compensation. Their report is due at the end of this month, and so that may also have some implications for the fiscal 22 budget.
Yeah, I'm sure it will.
It's difficult when so many departments are heavily salary dependent. And when you talk about a level funding, really, like you said before, Carol and Doug, you're cutting hours. That's all you're doing. It's not like highway where materials and paving can absorb some of the cuts, if you will. Okay, we're still going to work, just not paving as much. Take a little longer to do that road. But with departments like library, senior center, planning, 90-plus percent of their budget is hours. So any level funding, it means that hours are going to be cut. And it is. So, but I think your point is correct. What does that mean in terms of serving the public? And we understand it. Then that allows us to make our case that this is why we're pushing for level services, because you expect this level. This is what you pay for. This is what the town needs. And if you can prove it's a need-based budget, then that's what it is. It's needs-based.
And that's my, I guess that's my point. The more information we have, then the better you can substantiate your position of which, of going forward, if you have more information, it seems to me, but.
Well, I mean, let me just, let me just say that, I mean, advisory has not met since the, the special town meeting. So, I mean, what Carol and I have just mentioned is our personal opinions. And we, as a committee, have not even discussed this.
So do you, do you see any, I mean, in our, our horizon, we see the salary study as a, probably an increase to the budget. We don't know, but we'll see. We see our decision on the dispatch either being a level, I mean, with the budget or some savings, probably not much the first year, but in future years it will be. We have to see if the trees issue, if we finally chop down every tree. Recle, recraft the, the waste management thing. We did, we do expect the two, I think it's 227 mil road solar to go online in July. That's what the, get the commission, that's what the assessors are predicting. So that could be some income. So we have those kind of things going on. Do you have anything off the top of your head that you see, oh, what about the schools? Do you have any information there where, where they are in terms of their assessment and our projection?
Well, we just, just today received the, the new numbers. Enrollment is down again, but perhaps more importantly, the assessment percentage to Hampden has decreased again, this time by 0.22%. So in the short term, that obviously is good for us. That means we'll be paying a smaller amount of the overall school district budget. But it's a trend of reducing, our, our portion of the enrollment is declining and it has been now for a period of a few years.
Is theirs increasing or is it declining as well, do you know?
They're both declining. But on a, on the, the split between the towns is skewing so that Hampden's percentage is smaller.
And what was, what was the decline in the total enrollment, do you know?
I think 130, was that the number, Doug?
I, well, I think 130 was the number of homeschoolers that they have, that they're following this year. I don't have the, I don't have the, in, in front of me right now.
Okay.
You know, obviously that, that's available. I don't think Morris, I don't think Morris on this call. She would have that number.
So.
If they have 130 homeschoolers, that's a symptom of the COVID because we never had that, not, not even close to that amount.
That's what I was gonna say. Is that real?
That's gotta be a symptom of the COVID. I think it, literally if we had 20, 20 homeschoolers when I was superintendent, that was a lot. So that number has got to be reflective and I think once school opens up, you'll see that number come down. So, but they can't include those kids in their October account. So that actually is going to decrease the amount of money, chapter 70 money we get as well. So while we may be thinking that our number goes down, a loss of chapter 70 number may even, Doug may even negate any savings we have because the towns will have to pick up the difference in the loss of those funds.
Right, right. So what I, what I heard Aaron say today was that there's like 130 kind of bodies, if you will, and that the homeschool numbers quadrupled from last year. And the total enrollment in the district is 2,773 for the October numbers. I don't know what it was last year, but if anybody knew it, that's, that's what it's, it's against. The 2773 is the current enrollment. Hampden has 571 kids.
How many?
Can I make a comment and then ask a question? My comment is relative to the discussion about the budget on, when I came on advisory board, I questioned those some, a number of line accounts that appeared to me to be numbers that had a, for lack of better words, had a poor expenditure, expenditure history. In other words, something that you, a line account that you think would be spent over the course of 12 months, we would be in the third quarter, beginning of fourth quarter, and the money hadn't even been, been spent yet. So I was questioning whether or not the request was even valid. So for example, some supplies and materials accounts in some of the budget. So I think one of the messages I would like the selectmen to give to the people running the different departments is make sure your requests reflect the actual spending, expenditure history. So at the end of the year, you shouldn't have any money left in some of those accounts. And what we're finding, what I saw was there was money left in some of those accounts. And that number had looked pretty consistent over the last couple of three years. So I would, that would be one message I'd like to have the selectmen give. Then one other question I have, going back to the schools, is what's the status of the legal issue? Are we going to be looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars in legal fees? Does anyone have any plans to sit down with the regional school committee and talk about what all that's going to mean? I just kind of question.
We've had, we've had a couple of meetings with the, our attorney and discussed those very issues and we have not made a decision as of yet.
Has anybody sat down with the regional school committee and said, what's the plan? Are you going to, are we going to think about the effects this will have on the towns? Or are we just going to somehow come to an agreement that we should start working together?
I can't, I can't comment on that. I'm sorry. Yes.
We've got one more item, Don.
Yep.
A message came in today from the business manager that Wilbraham has approved an expenditure of $150,000 in COVID funds for improvements in the schools. Our selectmen have authorized one-fourth of the amount that Wilbraham will spend to be taken from the town's COVID funds. We were allocated, as you know, $460,000. We can certainly accommodate a $35,000, no, a $37,500 allocation to the schools for that purpose. So there's going to be making some investments outside the budget process as well.
Were we really one-fourth of their number? Cause we've always really gone with a three to one type thing. I think we were talking, we do one-fourth, they would do three-fourths. It's kind of how I remember. I think just, which is just a math thing. If they did 140, help me out, 42 something is going to be our part or whatever. That's my, we've always been the three to one number.
Well, I, I think, I think the ratio now is, was, wasn't it 20?
22.
22% was us and, and 88 was them. But I mean, it's.
It's all for the right purpose.
It's all for the right reason. So we're all.
I think three to one. We were going to do one-fourth of the total expenditure, I think is what we were talking. If they do 150, we would do 50, something like that.
Yeah, right. Whatever's, whatever's agreeable would be fine. Yes.
We talked about our building as primary recipient. Correct? Green Meadows.
Green Meadows.
Right, exactly.
Yes, right.
So, uh, so I guess what I'm hearing is we're gonna, we're, we have the department meeting to talk about level service budget. We'll ask them if they could look at level funding so we know what the cuts are.
What impact that would be.
Right. And that will make sure that, that their request, that their line item express or expenditures, there's a history there, as, as Paul suggested, of the expenditures to, to see if that's actually what they spend each time without, you know, appropriating more and getting, getting those line items squared away.
I think also throughout this process, the, the regional budget is going to be crucial with the declining enrollment and, um, you know, we're, and, and perhaps declining state aid, that they could be given the message maybe from the advisory or from the powers that be that they should be watching their budget closely and trying to economize on those areas that they feel they can, rather than just going on as they have in the past.
Well, I, I would, I would add, Mary Ellen, that, you know, they'll be at the meeting next week as a department of the town and Doug and I are serving on the budget subcommittee and have for several years. So they're not kind of running wild on the budget. We're, we're there every meeting, paying attention and getting to weigh in on, you know, how the budget is, is set forth. So, um, you know, I think that they understand their obligation to Hampden and are very respectful of our participation, just so folks know.
What, you know what they have in their E and D?
I, I don't want to say off, I don't remember off the top of my head, Don.
Yeah, I don't want to say it. If I'm wrong, I, it's, it's not a good number to be wrong on.
Okay.
But it's. I have, I have also been at meetings when, when you and Doug have been at them. And I will say that you represent Hampden well and you ask meaningful questions and you're part of the process. So I think you should be commended for giving up that time and, and for having input into that process. My concern is that the, the budget doesn't seem to reflect changes in enrollment and things like that. And I would like it to do a little more of that. But I can appreciate it's, it's a difficult job.
Anything else? Anyone? Thank you. Thank you guys.
Just, just quickly, Don, just, just, I don't know if you had the, the tax rate on your, on your agenda for tonight?
Right.
The, uh, that the tax rate was set?
Well, the tax rate was set, it's $19.67 per thousand.
Right.
Which is lower, but people still may pay more taxes because there was also a revaluation. 7%, I think it was. 11%.
Yeah.
So it's lower rate.
I thought that was favorable news. It should be, uh, made public.
Can I, can I just ask about logistics for next week? Is the plan to have the meeting at Thornton Burgess? Or is it Zoom meeting?
Yeah. We're both, hybrid meeting.
Okay.
Spread out. Okay.
All right, thanks.
And who's going to be doing the paperwork? You know, typically we hand out the, the budget sheets, uh, things like that. Is that something Pam will coordinate with Kristen?
Well, we're, we're kind of in limbo with a clerk at this point. So, um, you know, if.
Tell Pam and Bob they started up.
Yeah. What paperwork are you talking about, John? Just like the potential schedule, a draft schedule?
Well, schedule and then we hand out the sheets and et cetera.
Budget, the budget sheets.
Oh, the, the Excel sheet. Yeah, yeah. I can probably prepare the Excel sheet and I could, I can look at the draft if Pam does a draft of the schedule. Doug and I can take a look to make sure it lines up with our thinking in terms of how we know we need to prepare the green sheets in the spring. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Thanks, everybody. Okay, good night.
Ambulance contract? How we doing there?
Yeah, we have it here. You can sign the last page. Basically what I've done is this.
Thanks, Ray, Don.
What I've done is this, because we, we have changed the designated point person for the town, I've used the term designate. And then if you look on page two, J, I put in there, the town's designate for the purposes of coordinated cooperation. With the contractor is the fire chief. The fire chief is unavailable. The contractor should interact with the police chief, lieutenant administrator. So all the rest of the references that were once police chiefs, and then we changed it to fire chief, now it's, it's designate. So I have no idea why the change is printed out in blue. Tried to figure that out because they were actually, when I set on the tracking system, it was red, but.
Police are logical. Can we, can we just, I had, I had a couple of questions. One was on 4K. It says explanation of response times over 20 minutes. And I thought that we had changed to 10 minutes. It's on page three. I'm sorry. I could tell you the page. Sorry. In fact, I know it had changed to 10 because I wrote 10. I mean, not that, that made perfect, but.
Well, I'll, I'll check on that. I have the, the copy that was signed by Don earlier and does the board want to change it to 10?
Wasn't it 10? Am I mistaken? 20 minutes seems like a long time to me, to be.
Well, we have an eight minute.
Sounds extraordinary. I would definitely want an explanation of 20, but 10 to 15, I mean, things could happen.
We have an eight-minute target.
Target.
And we're now averaging five minutes and some seconds.
Well, maybe we can just check that for accuracy.
All right.
And then, and then the other thing I thought was if we've already signed a contract that went into effect so that July 1st was the operating date for this contract, anything we do now really should be an addendum or an amendment or something to this contract so that we have the original and then we have whatever the changes have been, so that we can track them a little as time goes on.
I've told, I've explained to the management of Action Ambulance that the Oversight Committee came up with this idea that we should have a contract that reflects accurately the relationship that we have. And the old contract had police chief in it and we were going to go with the police chief as the point person, but that changed because of some negotiation issues, I guess. And then I was going to change it to fire chief, but now we may want to change the designate in the future. And so it won't have such major contract.
Right.
All right.
Well, actually not typos. The, the contract that we had was a PDF and it was a scanned PDF. And I was ready to pull my hair out.
I think you were.
Trying to get a, a Word file that was, but it doesn't work that well.
Exactly.
Anything else?
So if, so if we're going to do it as an addendum or, I don't have to give an addendum or amendment, but whatever, we should put at the top that there's an, with the attached amendment, right? There's some, some notification so that it's a separate document and it just attaches to this. Is that what you mean? Okay, okay. Or it could be doing that, that one. Right.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the updated contract between Action Ambulance and Hannon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know, aside from the wording, some wording issues, I think the relationship is going very well, and the company is providing good service to the town. Because I don't think most people will understand until they really need.
Exactly, exactly.
Emergency services.
Yeah.
Vote to renew liquor licenses? What do we have here?
Those are septic tanks.
Much different, much different, definitely two different things. Does the chair make a motion to approve the common victular and liquor license listed below for Gio's Pizzeria, Village Food Mart, Hannah Grog Shop, Hamden Discount Liquors, VFW Post nine-three-nine-seven, and Mountain View Corporation, La Cachina de Hamden House, and La Casa Bella?
Second.
All in favor?
John, aye.
Mary Ellen, aye.
Ms. Chair, make a motion to approve the liquor license for a great horse.
What? Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Donald, aye.
Mary Ellen, aye.
I recuse myself from the vote.
Next item on the agenda. Agenda is, uh, the vote, okay, vote to renew, renew the common victular license. Victular, no, this is different. No liquor license. Dunkin' Donuts, Lou's Bagel Nook, right? Is Min Chow still a business?
Does the chair make a motion to board approve the common victular license presented for calendar year 2021, contingent upon receipt of all necessary forms and fees for Dunkin' Donuts, Lou's Bagel Nook, Linda Bond for Mountain View Drive-In, Friends of Senior Citizens, Gio's Pizzeria, La Cachina, Min Chow Gourmet, Village Food Mart, Laura Grimaldi for the VFW ninety-three-nine-seven, Reed's Country Corner, Dunkin' Donuts, Convenience Plus Three Seven One Three, and the Hamden Mini Mart.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
John, aye.
Donald, aye.
Mary Ellen, aye.
Ms. Chair, may I make a motion to approve the common victular license as presented for the year 2021, contingent upon a receipt of all necessary forms and fees for a great horse, one-twenty-eight Warham Road?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Donald, aye.
John, I recuse myself.
I cannot say that word, Bob.
No, you can't.
Nobody, nobody knows that word. Uh, next item on the agenda is a discussion of the Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve handbook regulation.
The handbook is in your pocket. The, the language for the handbook is in your pocket.
Christmas. All right, so the issue is what?
In the past, uh, we've basically, even though the handbook does say half a day off, we've given the, the town hall municipal employees the full day off before Christmas and New Year's. It really represents, it's a small difference in the, in the, in the budget per se, but it's a, it's a bit of acknowledgement of a job well done. You know, they need a time off. And again, last time we did this, I believe, was twenty eighteen. I looked through the records and we, we voted it nine yes, so. And I'd like to ask the board to consider that for this coming year.
So we did it in twenty eighteen and then we haven't done it since, is that what you're saying?
Last year was, well, last year was a bit of a.
Nineteen twenty, okay.
Last year was a bit of a, a heck of a year, Don, and I think we were in a lot of flux at that point.
Okay. So I have no, I have no problem with giving the day off. I'm wondering if we should just change the policy to be always a day off, or if we have to vote it every year. Yeah, you know, I mean, it seems perfunctory to do it every year, if we're going to do it every year.
There, and I did speak to, uh, Princess Becky about this. It would impact their operation because they do give out food. What she would like to do, then, they would allow the employee to use the extra half-day at their leisure when it's more convenient. They still have a function to provide with the food handout, you know, typically until twelve o'clock of the day before. So we're author, basically authorizing the extra half-day off, but some of the people may choose to just, once they put it in their pocket and use it at a time with their supervisor's permission, kind of like a floating half-day, they will. Some departments find it, you know, it is critical, they are there for that time. You know, she's on the call, she was, and I think, uh, that was the light jury.
Well, then we might as well just grant the one year at Ham. Becky, are you there?
Becky?
I'm here.
Can I summarize that quickly?
Yes, you did. We, uh, we do give out meals and we don't like people to go for too many days without a meal, so we would prefer, well, we won't take a full day on.
Yeah, put, put the pressure on.
So we would not take a full day on Christmas Eve. Um, when it falls on a weekday like that, we would opt to still hand out a meal, and, you know, if we can use the other half as a floating day, then we would do that.
Okay, thank you.
So we might as well just make the motion for this year and then have Bob look into it if he wants to and go forward with the policy. So I make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
John, aye.
Aye, Donald, aye.
Mary Ellen, aye.
I see Dr. Himmelstein on, are you on for the amendment to the conservation on unmute her? Hold on, we're gonna unmute you. Can't hear you, hold on.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, that's, I'm here for the amendment to the CR.
All done, taken care of.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, I can leave.
You can leave now.
I appreciate it. All right, thank you, Mary Ellen. Bye-bye.
Capital planning policy?
Well, the, the, last week we had gotten into a discussion of capital planning, and I, I gave you all, you both, a, um, capital planning committee overview kind of thing. It seems to me that, um, this doesn't have to be set in stone, but that for, for all committees, we would be better served if we had categories of information that we gave them. What is their purpose or, um, goal, what is their organization should be, what their membership should be, what their budget should be, and what reporting system and timeline we have for them, because I think that makes them more efficient and it makes us more efficient. So either we can discuss that issue for all committees going forward, or we can discuss the planning capital overview that I gave you, which can certainly be revised because there are lots of, you know, everybody can have a different wording and a different way of saying things and whatever. So that's, that's what that issue is, and now it's up to you, Ms. Chair.
One of the questions I had was the budget.
That was controversial. Um, when I looked through, I looked through various different towns as to what they had, and, um, most of them had a budget parameter, and, and some of them were higher than two percent, I think I said two percent. Some of them were higher than two percent and some were, you know, at the two percent level, so, that would have to be discussed as to whether that's something that the board wants to do, but it's hard to have a committee go through the work of looking at capital projects if you have no money attached to it. I think major projects obviously are going to go for bonding and, and can be bigger deals, but there are some smaller projects at two percent would do a lot to be able to make them meet their goals, or make the capital planning goal of saying we've delivered on something. Um, so.
So you're looking basically, so the town approved the charter for the capital planning committee back in two thousand and one, so you're looking to amend the town-approved charter or replace it in its entirety?
I didn't find it in the bylaws.
I mean, it's in the town report.
I didn't find it in the bylaws, okay, and I found.
Oh, excuse me. This is Nancy Seaver. In the two thousand and six Hamden report, town report, it mentions five sections of the capital planning committee.
And what does that say, do you know? I mean, did you?
Here's a copy. Bob printed it for all of us.
Okay, so this is very similar.
Yeah, that's my point. Why don't we just look at maybe tuning that up like with your.
Yes, that's fine. That's fine. I don't have any problem with that.
Okay.
I didn't see it. I looked through various reports and I didn't see it here.
You're new in town.
Okay, so.
And then Bob's got a meeting next Tuesday, perhaps we can.
Right, and then, and then to decide if, if going forward, we should adopt something like this, you know, for other committees, A, and then have a reporting system so that we had a master calendar and said on the, you know, in January, this, this committee reports to us, and in March, this committee reports to us. Otherwise, you lose track of these people, and it almost, it devalues them and it makes us less efficient, you know, or it doesn't devalue them, but you know, I mean, it, we do want them doing the work and thinking they're coming back to tell us something and we're listening and we're paying attention.
The job of liaisons as well to bring back to our board.
Right.
You know, hey, I was at my fire department meeting, by the way, this is some of the things capital-wise they're looking at.
Yep, yep. Okay, so.
We'll go through that.
We pushed the capital meeting to next Tuesday because of the.
Beautiful. Thank you.
All right, uh, border health variance, five thirty Glen, five, border health variance, five thirty Glendale Road. We have a border health, border health variance, five thirty Glendale Road.
I don't know what I'm saying. Am I saying anything?
Yeah, you're, you're asking for a variant.
In my folder.
Might be those right there, I think, correct.
Are these here? No. Oh, request a variance. We did this already, didn't we?
It's not signed.
I don't think it's signed. It doesn't seem signed.
This was the.
Request, okay, so I will just say.
Yes, you did, but this one is for this week. It's another one. You did one, but this is another one this week. All right, here I go.
Is this the racetrack, Jane?
Just let her sign it.
All right, so this is, this, if you want me to make a motion requesting a variance for a reduction in separation between the SAS and high-ground water by one foot from four feet to three feet.
Correct. Thank you.
As recommended by the Board of Health.
By the Health Agent.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
I think it's a wonderful idea, and I would propose it enthusiastically.
All in favor?
Aye. But as long as we're on the Board of Health, shall I, shall I share with you the Board of Health meeting today, or do you want me to do it later?
Yes, please.
Okay, the Board of Health met, met today, the Health Agent, um, the, our nurse, Mr. Markle, myself, Jane, and the, the hot, we, the highlight of the meeting was going over COVID and, um, the fact that they are going to a meeting to become a, the state has asked for plans to become dispensing sites and Hamden and Warham.
Dispensing sites for what?
For inoculations or, okay, vaccines, and, um, they had done this before, and they are going to develop a plan, which is almost a revisiting of the old plan that they had, um, and then forwarding it to the state. There is no real, um, information as to when the vaccines will be delivered, or, but the plan will be in place should we be necessary. The town, the state and different people are having a difference of opinion as to whether they should have dispensing sites or whether they should use the CVS model where people will go to their pharmacies or their whatever and get the inoculations there. So I think that that, is that, Mr. Markle, have I covered everything on that more or less?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, um, there was also a discussion of the Santa drive-by, whatever we call it, parade. You don't call it that, but whatever, the Santa, the Santa parade. The Santa parade.
Those don't happen here in Hamden.
The Santa parade, and there was some concern expressed about if the, um, parade goes through parking lots, that that would be a gathering site for people, people will leave their cars, and it can become a health issue. Mr. Markle agreed that he would, or, um, he would talk to the people in charge of that and just make them aware to be cautious and to tell people to be responsible and to, you know, to not gather in groups and, and whatever. And then the other, the only other issue, we, we did, it was sort of lengthy meeting, but we did, and we went, went over several things, but the only other thing was budget coming up and the fact that the, um, the nurse that we have for five hours, to five to ten hours a week, is certainly being swamped with the number of COVID cases and whatever, and so we would probably be coming back to the board with some kind of an expansion of her hours. She does not want to be full-time, and in fact, she doesn't even want to be part-time. She wants to just do, you know, do like ten hours like she's doing now, maybe fifteen hours or whatever, but we will come back to you when, when the budget is in the process.
What are you thinking, are you thinking for next budget year, that by the grace of God, the COVID thing drops down, that there would still be a need for expanded hours?
Well, Lori McCool sent us her resignation letter, her retirement letter, not her resignation, her retirement letter for August, and, um, so there has to be some discussion as to where we, where we do going forward. But if we don't have any position in the budget for next year, then our concern was, you know, it'll be beyond the point of being able to do it if we wait till she retires. So we want to be able to develop a plan that this is what we, what we want to do. Are we going to consolidate with Wilberham in some way? Are we going to each have our own nurse? Are we going to share a nurse? You know, I think Bob mentioned that he was looking at, um, PVPC, right, to see if they would do something with this whole thing. So it's all in the planning stages, but I don't want to come to you with a surprise and have you say, well, you never mentioned this before. So, um, we really don't know. Lori felt that the vaccination and the COVID thing really wasn't going to come to, to full fruition until April. She thought that's when the, the, the inoculations are going to get, you know, be more needed and, and whatever, because they have, they go to the pods first, which are the nursing homes and those kinds of places, and then by the time they get to the regular population, it would be April. That's, she, she, she thought, but she's not sure. She, nobody knows. Nobody knows anything, but we're all just talking.
One more thing on the parade. Again, we want to sense a normality in town. You know, the tree-lating ceremony has been something going on for decades. However, in the byword of this year, an abundance of caution, which probably is the number one word in the Webster dictionary, we're not encouraging people to come to the town hall lawn when we flip the switch. The fire trucks will start the parade here. The three selectmen will be here, and I'm sure we'll all be singing.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely, but we'll flip the switch and Mr. and Mrs. Claus will start the journey around town, but please, we are not looking for a congregation to come out on the lawn at that point. Next year, definitely we're going to have the biggest party that Hamden's ever had.
Let me just say this about a designated, a designated site.
Okay.
Being a registered pharmacist and a certified immunizer.
A certified immunizer, my gosh. Interesting.
Impressive.
Yes. I can tell you that the first vaccine that's coming out has to be kept at 170 degrees. Negative, negative 170 degrees. I don't think we have any of that refrigeration.
No.
The second vaccine, which probably won't be distributed until sometime in the sprally spring, will be kept at regular refrigeration, except, once you open the vial, it's only good for six hours. So you have to get all your shots done in six hours. All right? And then they're all two-dose vials. So then you have to have a way of getting everyone back here within two to three weeks, depending on the particular one, whether it's the Pfizer or the Moderna. The AstraZeneca can vial with the AstraZeneca product, which is being, going to be distributed in Europe first, is the better product in the sense that it can, it's more stable, and they can probably by, by the summer, get it into single-dose vials. But the problem with AstraZeneca, it's only 70% effective. So they're all still in three-stage file. They're going to go from emergency, and I wouldn't suspect that the general population will see a vaccine until late spring at the best, at best.
She, she, she shared much of what you did, and, and Mr. Markle shared about one of the companies. What's the company that you shared? It's going to become approved?
Well, Moderna is, is in for emergency approval this week.
Probably this week.
Yeah. But it's not just getting the approval, it's getting the vaccine produced. They produce in Massachusetts.
Yes.
And obviously getting it distributed and getting the injections. My only thought is that once, if Moderna gets their improvement, my guess would be that the governor would be inclined to go with a Massachusetts company, both research and development in Cambridge, as well as production, I think down around Fall River. I would think he might favor that company in terms of getting, getting vaccine out to all of us.
So all, all in all, this was really up in the air and just a discussion at the Board of Health, and, and now John has added a lot more facts to the, to the, to the mix.
I mean, even at ours, even at our site, we're not going to be able to do the Moderna because we don't have refrigeration 170 degrees below zero.
Even for Moderna, you need it.
Moderna needs, the Pfizer, you need 170 degrees below zero. Moderna, you need regular refrigeration, but once you crack the vial, six hours.
And what Lori said was.
To get there early.
Lori said that she doesn't understand how the state of Massachusetts can distribute freezing capacity. And she said the machines, these freezers cost $10,000.
Ten to 15,000.
Two cities and towns around the Commonwealth.
They can't.
Doesn't sound very practical.
Especially to the smaller towns like those. Really? Okay. Just, I want to go correspondence. We have a, I don't know if you, you all seen the highway report, the final projects, construction projects by Mark. Appreciate that, because you did good work, as always. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we should, yeah. They always do a good job. We have a note, as you also mentioned from Lori, that she's planning to retire in, in August. We got a letter from the Superintendent of Schools regarding the COVID and the reimbursements that they're going to ask for. And we also, that's the same, that's the same, same letter. Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Don Administrator Report?
We've covered much of it already, Chairman. The Capital Committee meeting has been moved to the 15th. I did set up on the website a Capital Planning Committee page, as well as a section for minutes and the agenda as well. So we posted a meeting for the 15th, so I think we should be, and I hope everyone's been notified. I know there were some issues there, but I think we're ready to go. You've done the Action Ambulance contract, the Committee Compact Grant that I passed out recently. That's something I think worth considering, just advise the board if you, you think that makes sense, just let me know. We've already talked about the CARES Act funding for the regional school system. There is a meeting for watershed assessment on the 16th with the group that's doing the municipal vulnerability project along with the Audubon Society. Also, PVPC is doing a program on best practices for ground-mounted solar installations on Wednesday. I've signed up for that. I'm going to try and record it. If it's good, I'll find a way to share it with the board. We did meet with the Health Subcommittee this morning, and also the annual conflict of interest requirement is being managed by the town clerk and Pam, getting the signatures and collecting them all, and we'll keep them. That's, that's the report you do have. I did pass out the letter from the recent school committee superintendent and others having to do with the expenditure of COVID money.
Tomorrow evening, 7 o'clock is the forum of the dispatch. For all those interested, if you have questions, comments, or questions, we'd be gladly to hear them.
We'll be here.
We'll be here.
And we have, we have 23 documents that are posted on the town website, as well as the Zoom code for those who want to join the meeting.
Questions ahead.
And encourage, actually, questions ahead of time, and so it'll be easier for us because sometimes we don't see all the chat comments and things, but we'll do, we'll do our best. Anything else coming for the board?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.